Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the April 27th, 2023 Planning Commission's Special Meeting to Order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the "Live Meetings" link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods," or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here. We're joined this evening by Community Development Department staff, Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Delo Freitas, as well as Deputy Director Dylan Savage running our tech. We are also joined this evening by Danny Oxyuk, a Cal Poly student who has completed his senior project with the city evaluating the Gateway Area Plan using crime prevention through environmental design principles, and we look forward to that presentation. Next, we will have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are on the agenda. We will not be opening public comment on each item individually. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "Raise Hand" icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing *9 if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. Before I open public comment, I do want to address quickly the agricultural-residential redesignation proposed in the land use element, which many of you are here to speak about. I recognize that this is not a time for Commissioner deliberations, but I want to let folks know that we have heard you and the many comments we've received, as well as letters. I understand the many reasons why these two parcels, which together represent .3% of agriculturally-designated lands within the city, are being considered for redesignation. However, the relative impact to housing production is minimal. As such, I would like the city to focus its energy on more productive sites, and for this reason, I'm not going to support this redesignation and suggest we leave the zoning as it is. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Hi. My name is Karen Davidson. I don't think what I have to say is irrelevant at this moment. I'd like to speak against the use of the SALC funds, $250,000, to rezone ag land, which you were talking about, as high-density, when the grant was specifically to prevent that. That's my understanding. In the last few weeks, I've seen the planning staff accumulate power at the expense of public input. First, the council voted to accelerate the schedule to make sure no grant funds were lost. They might be lost for a different reason. The council felt that the bike rack plan was okay, even if the staff planned the entire agenda, and how long that took out of each meeting, leaving therefore a plan as to what was in the bike rack for June, when not everyone is available. Then I saw this group allow the staff to have, last time, larger planning input without you guys being consulted. There was maybe some question as to whether it would be small lots, big houses, small size, up to 20,000 square feet, whatever, and that was to be left, but it essentially is staff getting more power and people not having to be notified as to what is happening in their neighborhood. We've had that happen when the dairy wanted to build, honestly, a factory farm in our backyard, on the acres that now column in Monica own, and we weren't, we were not informed of that, even though we were the neighbors. We had our land annexed, in the largest annexation since Sunnybury, and we were not informed. We had to pay to get unannexed. You know, there's, there's just many situations. I saw West End was supposed to get funding for a park when the, when Danko built the cross, whatever, courtyards. Danko built courtyards, and they were supposed to give the money, but instead the money went to give lighting to the park, the crafts park. And now, what, 12, 15 years later, West End, poor West End, is having to get their parks replaced. And that money should have gone years ago, and I think that there's too much discretionary power in staff, and I wish there was still an opening on this meeting for it, because I really, really wanted to apply and have more than just an occasional chance to say something or write a letter. I think there's too much power, and the citizens are not getting enough. And, and that's all I need to say. You've got 26 extra seconds.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Monge. I'm an Arcata resident. I'm also a local property manager. I work closely with residential property owners, as well as tenants, have an astute understanding of the local housing market, especially for Arcata. I'm in favor of increasing density as defined in the Planning Commission's land use element. I believe there's a shortage of housing, specifically quality rental units at affordable prices. Increasing zoning density is a step in the right direction. With Arcata's population growth, as well as Cal Poly Humboldt expecting an influx of new students, there's a higher demand than ever right now for housing in Arcata. More housing stock will result in more competition amongst landlords for tenants, resulting in competitive pricing. Tenants will have more leverage when looking for rental property, and they also have more options. With more new construction, additional units, owners of older properties would be incentivized to renovate or upgrade their property to remain competitive with rents. In turn, this will create higher-quality housing throughout the greater Arcata area. Regarding the properties that are designated in the land use element, not all owners whose properties will be rezoned to a higher density will build or take any action immediately. However, that ability for them to add units, either now or in the future, is an overall benefit for the community. So I personally manage apartments for owners whose property is defined in Land Use Element Exhibit 12 in the Sunnybury-Bayside area. He was not able to make it this evening, but we did discuss this beforehand, and he is highly in favor of expansion. He's unsure whether or not he will actually add additional units to the property. There are high barriers to building new apartments, high capital investment, and the amount of time from the permitting process to completion. This is a multi-year project. This isn't going to happen overnight. So everything involved in increasing Arcata housing stock takes time. I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission, City of Arcata, has done, taking this initiative in steps so far. I'd like to see this moved along quickly so that local landlords in turn could begin moving forward as well. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you for those comments.
My name is Kelly. I'm here to advocate against the rezoning of ag land to residential on Q and 17th Street there. I'm one of the neighbors. I live on Iverson Avenue, and I've lived here for 20 years, and the reason that I chose that spot to finally buy my dream home was because of the beautiful farmland and beautiful landscape there, and it just makes me kind of sad to hear that might go away. I think that's an important aesthetic to the town here of Arcata, and that's why I moved here. I love it. I love it here, and I hope that doesn't change. I also have a letter from a neighbor. I don't know if I can hand this to someone to read. She couldn't make it because she was at work, but she did want to be heard. Thank you so much. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dear Commissioners, in light of what the Chair said at the start of this meeting, I want to thank you for listening to the community, upholding our values to protect our open space and agricultural lands. This is a big step forward supporting a strong and vibrant community that embraces locally grown food into the future. Converting and rezoning agricultural land, no matter how small a parcel, makes it difficult to afford land to farm due to land speculation. I mentioned last week that when we protect agricultural land, we protect ag land prices for new farmers. This is critically important. The Planning Commission must look ahead and continue to support and protect agricultural land. As a community, we need to further protect these lands and keep them available and affordable for future farmers. With Measure A, we taxed ourselves to preserve and protect agricultural land and open-space lands. That is the strongest statement any community can make. It's time to invest some of those dollars into permanent preservation efforts. What we do within the city with our agricultural and open-space land matters. Arcata needs to continue being a leader in agricultural land protection and be the barrier to ag conversions through solid protective policies. So thank you for moving forward in this effort.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Troy Nicolini. I actually own one of those parcels at the corner of 17th and Q Street. I submitted a letter to you all, and I think it, I'm reading it myself afterwards, and I think it may have been a little vague as to my position on this rezoning, so I want to make it clear upfront that I actually support the rezoning of that property. I want to clarify, my letter already said this, but, you know, it's not actually ag-exclusive, it's ag-residential, and that parcel I own, which is 3.4 acres, could actually hold eight houses in its current zoning, which would essentially, as I said in my letter, really constitute luxury residential, not agricultural lands. And I actually think that, you know, I feel like a steward of that property, more so than an owner. I feel a great responsibility to the community. My brother and I did all the work to restore the farmhouse, and people stopped by constantly and expressed gratitude that we were not tearing it down or not turning it into, you know, a kind of beater rental, so we feel a commitment to the community, want to do right by the community. So I just want to, I want to explain why I support the zoning change. I do recognize that a zoning change represents a long-term objective that's independent of any landowner, but the previous landowner owned that property for 86 years, and I hope that my family is able to have the honor to be the stewards of that property for a similar period of time. So I hope our vision impacts the property. So I can't, I can't control future owners, but my, my vision is that I believe that property should support nature, is one objective. It's along James Creek, so it has repairing habitat. We've already commissioned some, designed some native plants and trees along the northern border, so I think some of it is allocated to nature. Food production, I think, is a natural use for that property, not necessarily the entire property, but certain, certainly portions of it. But I think it should do its bit to try and help the housing issue in Arcata. And, you know, trying to accomplish all that with 3.4 acres with setbacks from the creek is very challenging. It's more challenging with the current zoning, which essentially would drive the place to turn into eight luxury homes on their own sort of bigger piece of land with all the accompanying paved areas and impervious areas. On the other hand, and which would completely take it out of food production and in no way address the housing issue in the, in the city. A higher-density zoning would actually give us, like a design tool, to try and accommodate these needs, minimizing the footprint of the houses and maximizing the use of the property for the other uses that I think it's, it's really great for. We'll also maintain the agricultural feel of the property and allowing other people to actually experience what it's like to live there, because I can tell you, it's an amazing place to be. I feel so grateful that we get to be there. So I, I really believe that, you know, this vision I've described is the right thing to do with that property. Selfishly, I'm completely supportive of staying as it is. I would love to spend the rest of my days admiring the unobstructed view of the bottoms in St. Mary's Church. So just to be clear, I'm a little conflicted myself, but what I've outlined, I believe, is really the best use of that property for the community. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
Hello. Dave Mizerv from Arcata, on Grant Avenue. And as part of the land use element, what I wanted to address was the Craftsman's Mall zoning district, and I think what's going on there is really bizarre, in a way, with your planning process, or at least with the recommendations, because we have Craftsman's Mall, which is now going to be the student housing with 800 people and five-story buildings and all of that, and we have the land to the north of there, which is industrial with a lot of open space, and those two kind of belong together as, as an area, as a land use area. And then they've added on I Street. I Street is a residential street. It's separated from Craftsman's Mall by a gate. There's no through-traffic. We don't ever want to see through-traffic. I hope the city agrees. And it's a completely different thing. It's actually part of the Sunset neighborhood. So why has this happened? Well, I think it's happened because Strombeck has a proposal to build 78 units behind the tennis courts down there, and they need high-density residential zoning in order to do that. So basically, what we're seeing is that, you know, because of this proposed project of 78 units, which is more than the number of units in the whole neighborhood, all the way from Sunset up to Craftsman's Mall that are currently there, it more than doubles the size of the neighborhood and causes huge issues with, at the south end of J Street in terms of traffic. But the main thing that bothers me is the attaching it onto the Craftsman's Mall thing. And you've all heard of gerrymandering, I guess, you know, manipulating zoning around, manipulating election districts for gain, and I think this is manipulating district boundaries for economic gain for big developers like Strombeck. So I refer to it as gerryplandering. And I think that you should maybe think about this term, because there's a lot of it going on in the city, drawing new lines and saying, "Well, over here, but we'll tack this one on because it kind of works." Artificially shaping a zoning district, which is illogical for economic gain. The other major point I wanted to make was just that we have SB 9, which we haven't really had a chance to see implemented, which allows for up to 32 units per acre if you have eight parcels per acre. That would be a much more organic way, I think, to develop the city and to provide more housing and to provide local work for smaller contractors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Beginning of April, I was in Los Angeles for about four or five days. I used the metro line, checked out a lot of cities, and looked at their mid-rises, and they're very strategic in where they put them, along metro lines. They don't scatter them throughout neighborhoods. Also, Davis is, you know, it's a university town, so I'll use that as a comparison, too. Very strategic in where they're putting their four-story buildings for students, for the general public. They're not scattering them around, you know, your general neighborhood. So I and a lot of other people have a lot of problems with what you're doing here, because it really shows a lack of understanding. I mean, I'd go so far that not all of you, but really, you need to have like a basic urban design class, because, you know, that's not how they're doing it throughout California. Yes, they are going, taking this seriously of doing four-story mid-rises, but they're not scattering them out through the neighborhoods, and that's what you proposed. I was here, and it's frankly pretty embarrassing. You would think at the very least, if you were going to do something like this, you'd be very honest with the public. How about just like a stake and some helium and go throughout the neighborhoods, all these places you're proposing this, and let's see what it looks like next to somebody's house and see what the public responds to? Because the, the way that you're doing it, it's just kind of this very secretive, you know, not to be, when people are showing up and, and you, it feels like you're going to try to push it through. As far as the general plan, I'm really surprised that you're ready to like move with a recommendation on that. There's so much information that you don't have. You don't have the information on the wastewater treatment plant. That's a long ways off from the report on that. How can you make a recommendation on the Beryl District if you don't have that? You also, that's part of the Coastal Commission, and that, that is something that was in writing, and you had a certain amount of time to do. That's not going to happen before you do your vote. You also, your EIR, you're not going to have that either, so you're basically making the decision without most vital information. We've had the sea level rise experts here. I don't know what happened with that, because they're basically, a lot of them are saying, "Don't do this in the Beryl District. Really high risk." We've had the fire department here. What did they say to you? Basically, "Do not build anything over three stories. We cannot do that without the funding." So you seem to be like moving on with all these issues without the answers. So, I mean, it's just very bizarre. It's not how planning should be done. It's, it's just, you know, it's like basically like gambling with the future of people with their lives, with the, with the financial situation, and I think part of that is maybe why you're driving it, that we seem to be in debt with the city and we need to have a lot of money, so.
Thanks for your comments, Gregory.
Hello to Commissioners and staff. James Becker, I recommend that the L&amp;K couplet be treated as a recommendation instead of a goal. Alternatives should be explored and approved by the community before making the couplet a goal in committing grant funding and seeking out right-of-ways. As the linear park petition continues, there are nearly 700 people who also believe that it should be a linear park and to preserve those open spaces, and that also says on that petition to abandon the two-way couplet. As does the local Sierra Club and the Arcata Transportation Safety Committee. The trail is classified as Rails with Trails. This should be enhanced into something not degraded into road expansion. Permanently paving over open spaces and segmenting wetland complexes and wildlife corridors, ignoring the original 2010, 2010 design for a linear park. The city should move forward with safety improvements on K Street, including eliminating parking on one side and improving pedestrian and cyclist safety. Install at least one stop sign at 7th Street, another blinking light at A Street to accommodate the North Coast Montessori School. There's no reason to wait on these safety improvements on K, and it makes no sense to sacrifice the greenways because the city refuses to explore other options, the two-way couplet. Just reminding you one more time that there is no guarantee that at least some or possibly all of the trail could be moved based on the language of the Gateway GA 7I. No net loss of Class 1 Trail system in general of the current total linear feet of the Class 1 Trail within the plan area, even if current facilities must be realigned or relocated other, to other routes within the plan area. If implementing the realigned roadway impacts the existing Class 1 Rails to Trails facility within the L Street right-of-way, design and construct a new Class 1 Trail in another location within the plan area. If implementing the realigned roadway impacts existing, I'm not going to do that again, I did that last time, I kind of liked it. In limiting circumstances, the city shall retain the discretion to allow applicants to demonstrate removal and relocation of the Class 1 Trail sections, and it goes on, if it would improve active transportation access and conductivity. This language approved, you know, allows private developers to realign and move L Street, and I think this fits in with, you know, talking about the master plan down in the Beryl District, and I, and I believe a lot of that language also addresses that issue and allows for that decision to be made by a developer, and those are some of the most precious spaces that I believe are north of 7th Street, also, you know, south of 7th Street, and also ones that are north of 11th Street, too. Yeah, I mean, seriously, consider this. I believe a lot of people would really like to see that park. It's a huge benefit for the district when the infill housing goes in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Joanne McGary, and I'm sort of emotional today for a lot of reasons. I have lived in Arcata or Humboldt County for 11-plus years now, came from Santa Barbara, where I was for seven years, 25 years in the Bay Area, including mostly San Francisco, a little bit of Berkeley, a little bit of Marin. And I went to UC Davis, took some planning classes, as a matter of fact, saw a lot of what that university town has done. I'm starting to feel like I need to say this every time I speak, that Arcata needs to be better than it thinks it is, and it also needs to be, if you look back, much more creative and innovative, and not just plug into the conformity line of other communities. We can do things so differently here, and one of the things that I wanted to share, five years ago, I was in a play about homeless women, because I was, for a while, a homeless woman, not to the extreme that a lot of people are, but it took me two years to find the big three: safe, sane, and affordable housing for a single working woman in this community. Safe, sane, and affordable. The affordable is barely there, but it is safe and sane, thank God. So when people say, "But we need housing," I have two people I know who live in Sorrel Place. I'd highly urge you to go over there and visit that place and see how it really is. I was fortunate all my life to never have to live a place where my front door did not open to the outside. That is part of the sanity of design, and so I just want to share that with you. I also want to share with you that in the last two days, I've been walking a lot. I have an old car that's dying, and that's maybe a good thing, because it motivates me to not drive. Try to take the bus a lot, challenges with public transit, major challenges, including the site of the Transit Center. But in my walks in the last couple of days, in the crosswalks, I have nearly been run down by cars. Just yesterday, walking up to the park at F and 11th, I was headed to the park, crossing the crosswalk, and a woman made a left-hand turn, didn't see me, stopped, had her window open. She goes, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't see you." And I looked at her calmly, but put my hands on her car door and said, "Now you know. Never again." But this is really becoming a serious issue with cars speeding around town, too many cars. The schools, the drop-offs, the pickup at school are horrendous. We've got to stop and make, because of climate change and safety and sanity, a non-car-centric Arcata. Please, please. I rode my truck here today. It's right there. You can try it out after the meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've been hearing a lot of misrepresentation of what will happen to the L Street linear corridor if the main trucking route, the couplet goes in, puts the main trucking route through there. A lot of that is, it's like echoing what was actually in the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. It's eerily similar. I would request Commissioners Tagney and Lehman and, and our new welcome Commissioner Yodowitz to maybe familiarize yourself with that plan a little bit more of the couplet plan and how it'll affect the, it'll impact that rail corridor for the businesses, for the residents, and for future and existing residents. And so I know there's confusion as what was actually was going to go on in that area. So please read the 2010 feasibility study and operations plan for the Rails with Trail. Chapter 10 covers the L Street corridor. See what the community was promised, what will be lost, and understand why so many want the linear park and not. park and not the couplet. There was a lot of time, passion, and money that went in to create this fantastic plan. So on arcatalinearpark.org, it has this plan. It also has Ukiah's Linear Park Master Plan as well. This is the same section of the Great Redwood Trail. It's their linear park that follows the rails straight through the middle of their town. It's fantastic plan. We should be copying it. So I urge you to walk the path. Oh, and spoiler alert on Ukiah's Linear Park Master Plan, no truck route goes through it and it remains a Class One Trail. So the mobility section tonight, Chapter 3, GA-7BD, talks about adjusting the trail to fit, so maybe minimizing it. They have a plan to move the end of the trail. So there's a lot of things that will be impacted. The Department of Fish and Wildlife determined that the state jurisdictional wetlands, south of L Street to Samoa, there's a linear ditch. I have a staff report that does this. I would say it's also, you know, they're being called maybe wetlands and low-quality wetlands. And I urge you to go to that area late at night and listen to the frogs.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Patricia.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Fred Wise. The Chair said that, used the phrase, "Leave the zoning as it is." I'd like to get some meaning to that phrase. Perhaps we can see a new map very quickly, like in the next few days, to see exactly what you're talking about. On this schedule, there are things that you're taking care of in good fashion. Other things are not, have not been. On Tuesday, we're going to talk about heightened shading and views. So perhaps get an updated schedule to reassess where we stand. And specific questions, whether growth management is going to be revisited. And when we do do heightened shading, perhaps we can have an expert on solar shading. The variety of colors used in all the editing, I would like to see a table of what those colors mean and on every document. The colors to me seem haphazard, but perhaps they do mean something. In terms of circulation, mentioned possibility of putting Class Four separated bike lanes on Foster Avenue. I think there is right of way to do that. And I'd like to know whether you plan on hearing from Dave Ryan and Transportation Safety Committee after their own discussion on circulation. In terms of the process here, I wrote a letter after the meeting. I think that's possibly more productive than trying to say things before the meeting because frankly, I don't know what's going to happen at the meetings. In the good old days, there's staff report, questions of staff, discussions, and then it was opened up for public input when we knew what you were talking about prior to a vote. I find, once again, I'm here talking about something which is unfortunately, something that should not be necessary to talk about. And I think you know what I'm talking here. On Saturday, less than a week ago, you made a decision about what the agenda would be. There was an e-notification that said what the agenda would be. I waited for the agenda to change. As a special meeting, it can be 24 hours prior to the meeting. There's no change to the agenda. The e-notification specifically said that we would be discussing things here tonight. This is not something I'm making up or misinterpreting. You can read it. It says it specifically. When the public doesn't know what it is we can talk about at the meeting, it's a bit inhibiting. It says, "We have received comments and proposed land use amendments and the commission will address those comments in this upcoming meeting." So I have 14 pages of land use amendments that were submitted. I don't expect them to be addressed at any time, really, but that's what the e-notification said. And congratulations for your work. I do support you. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred, for those comments.
Hi, I'm Kim Mallett Alvarez and I own Heartbeat on the Plaza. And I just want to share some of my concerns for the rezonings that are coming up. I'm concerned that the City of Arcata is trying to create all the housing for Cal Poly when that was kind of dropped on us in a very short timeframe. Their schedule for growth is not necessarily the city's schedule for growth. And obviously, it seems like we're trying to create all that housing on their timeframe rather than our own timeframe as a city. I'm concerned about the rezoning of agricultural land and some parcels within established neighborhoods like Sunset. I'm concerned that we're allowing developers to create our zoning rather than our city's values and goals. I'm concerned that developers are jumping on the buzzwords of infill and trying to develop their properties to a maximum rather than having it fit into the neighborhoods in which the parcels are located. I'd like to express support for the words of Dave Miserv and Gregory, that the developments and rezonings should fit in the neighborhoods. And with the advice of the Arcata Fire Department as well, like they shouldn't quite be so tall. Because I know that they don't have the ladders for that, having experienced a fire in the last three, four years. And maybe Cal Poly could kick in some cash and create better roads and maybe an entrance and exit from the 101 so that we can alleviate some traffic stress on the existing roads, which are already in really bad shape. I have a small car. I feel like it's going to fall into some potholes. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Kim.
Evening Commissioners and Staff. My name is Glenn Caldwell. I own property and live in the Sunset area. Basically, briefly, just wanted to echo Dave Miserv's comments about the northern section of the Sunset area being lumped in with Craftsman's Mall upzoning. Please, please try to leave residentially zoned areas that have single-family residences as they are. We've already effectively upzoned density with infill, mother-in-law units and ADUs, which I've participated in. Virtually all my neighbors are building ADUs on the street that I live in. Density has been increased. I don't think that the area that I live in, which I think still on the map is shown as residential low-density, still actually fits that description anymore with the number of units that are now in that neighborhood. So please, let's try to leave neighborhoods that have a residential character to them. Let's try to leave them as they are. Please decouple the northern part, I'm sorry, the southern part of the Sunset area, specifically around I Street, from any upzoning that you're going to do around Craftsman's Mall into the north. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those comments. How are we doing with commenters online?
We have about five.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jane.
I'm here on the third time in five days, and I want to welcome our new Planning Commissioner. You have a lot on your plate to try to catch up with all this material and public comment. First, I want to address Commissioner Tegney's concern about whether the public feels heard and how to address that. There are those of us who continually submit both written and public comment in person and online on subjects of concern, such as L Street, sea level rise, parking, building heights and density, and the extension of high-density residential designation to new areas in Arcata, the weight of concern. To give you an example, I, the Transportation Safety Committee, and others have asked staff to put a plan on paper for L Street as a linear park so that the commission and city council can actually consider it as an alternative to a one-way L Street truck route road. Without an actual diagram or a detailed plan for how L Street would look if it became a one-way street, you went ahead and appeared to have decided four to two on a straw poll to maintain the L Street couplet as a goal rather than as an implementation measure or recommendation on the presumption that it might actually take decades and to allow the city to begin applying for grants and easements on properties they don't currently own. You haven't even gotten feedback from the Great Redwood Trail Agency or existing businesses and residents along L Street, as far as I can tell. If the KL Street couplet were the only implementation or only an implementation measure, that would have allowed the city to see if proposed improvements to K Street would resolve most of the traffic issues as well as provide time to see how much traffic really arises from gateway development. And the planning commission seems to have totally ignored the close to 700 signers of the petition to maintain L Street, as well as recommendations from the Transportation Safety and Wetlands and Creeks Committees, without even discussing their reasoning or asking them to discuss this with you. So I'm asking the Planning Commission to remove the KL Street couplet as a goal and refocus it as an implementation measure and add the goal of continuing discussions of improvements to K Street, including multiple traffic calming measures. And that is simply one example of my concerns. As you know, I've been concerned that we haven't had a discussion of the implications of the sea level rise joint session for what we put in the Beryl District, for example. Next, the general plan proposal to upzone additional areas of Arcata is a huge problem. Due to Fred Wise's efforts on Arcata 1 and the efforts of others, property owners and neighbors are beginning to learn finally of their possible fate. There's no way, that's no way to treat the public. Thus far, I've seen no articles in the local papers to give the public notice.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Sean.
Hi, I'm Sean Armstrong of Future Fruits Farm and Tulip Fog Farm. I'm a bottoms farmer since 2007 and a co-owner of local business called Redwood Energy. So I'd like to thank the Chair for their comment opposing converting ag land to housing. That'd be our ag land. All you have likely enjoyed the Arcata Farmer's Market, the Humboldt grass-fed burgers at restaurants, deep-seated strawberry ice cream at the Scoop. And these local treasures are because of Arcata farmers profitably working on parcels as small as one acre. One acre is how Shakeford Community Farm, Tulip Fog Farm, Five-Fingered Farm, and Terra Family Farm started, off the top of my head. And the 30-year-old Bayside Park has only two acres of crops. The Development Department is proposing a rezone of five acres, three of which we rent at Tulip Fog Farm for grass-fed livestock, and we need that land for our business. And future farmers will need it too. Much of the bottoms is already reclaimed bay with lower-quality soils and higher water tables. And while this land, this land is deep black soil that can grow anything, it's irreplaceable, it's a source of our food. This land is also open space. It's not infill. With Shake Park to the east, ag-zoned land with an easement on it to the south, ag-zoned land to the west in the county, ag-exclusive land in the county. And the $250,000 Sustainable Agricultural Land Conservation Grant that was awarded to this general plan process is says for preserving ag land. I've been in contact with the SALT staff, and their awareness of non-compliance with the grant language triggered a meeting yesterday with Nancy Diamond, the city's lawyer. It is clear that this effort to rezone our ag land has already jeopardized future SALT grants with the state. And I promise, if our land is rezoned, I will do my best to let all the state agencies know that the city staff cannot be trusted with the power to administer grant funds in accordance with their stated intent and scope. The secret annexation by Development Director David Loyah and Plan West of our farmland and 70 acres totals, biggest sunnybraid, hidden from the city manager, hidden from the city council, and your commission for a year of regular meetings with Director Loyah, clearly illustrates that giving ministerial approval power to the Development Director will result in inappropriate, even illegal behavior that jeopardizes our community's intended planning. We will all regret it if you give them ministerial authority. It's proven it. So thank you for doing the right thing, what all Arcadans want, and preserve our ag lands while infilling underutilized sites and in coordination with the community rather than through ministerial approvals by a demonstrably untrustworthy Development Director. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks for your comments, Sean.
Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening Commissioners. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I'm going to limit my comments to the general plan circulation element since that is what is called out on the agenda. We have submitted detailed written comments about the circulation element over the past several weeks. And so I hope that you've had a chance to review those because I'm not going to go through all the technical details now, but the top-line items are that we would encourage you to adopt newer amended policies that commit to public transit improvements as well as to Class Four protected bikeways on busy streets. We also ask you to let go of the unhelpful functional classification system for roads and instead prioritize safety and low speeds on all city streets. I also want to express my appreciation for your decision a couple weeks ago to deprioritize level of service or congestion management in the general plan circulation element and would ask you to follow up on that to ensure consistency by removing references throughout the element to level of service deficiencies and similar language. And also to remove projects that are listed in the circulation element as well as the capital improvement plan, which are motivated solely by level of service deficiencies. And my final comment is that it seemed that the last time you discussed this, there was unanimous support for near-term and pretty significant safety improvements to K Street, which we would also strongly support. And so we would ask that as soon as possible, that be agendized for further discussion to hopefully move that project forward. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Colin.
Go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. My name is Angie Valletuto. I am a longtime resident of Arcata. I've lived here almost 23 years. I consider this my home. I'm concerned about the city's plan to rezone farming land. I oppose that. And I would like to see the Planning Commission preserve farmlands. I mean, it seems like it was just a year ago that the city was, the Planning Commission was trying to annex agricultural land into the city. And I feel that there's a lack of respect on some level about the thing that makes Arcata like wonderful, our open space, our local farmers, trying to develop a community where we have a full cycle of support. So I urge the commission to not rezone the land on 17th. I also, in the time that I've lived in Arcata, I lived on I Street. It's a very small street there. And I would also oppose zoning that into the Craftsman's Mall as well. I think that there are other options because I do believe that there is a housing issue. And I agree with the previous presenter who said that, you know, HSU's influx of students shouldn't cause the city to move at a faster speed in getting housing than what they want to do. I think that there are other options that the city could consider for housing besides taking away agriculture land. I also am concerned that the meetings are not easily accessible. I did not hear that there was a plan to rezone the land, and I live a block away from this land. I learned of it from a neighbor who I'm grateful alerted me. But even in looking at the minutes for the meeting today, I was not certain that that was even an item that was on the agenda. So I think that the commission needs to be clearer and more transparent in what they're talking about in their agendas. And I think that they should reach out to the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Hello, Commissioners. I-
Oops. I'm sorry, Lisa. There was a, I think I pushed the wrong button. Can you start over again? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, dear Commissioners, I hope you received my letter highlighting agricultural policy in our general plan. I believe that you will conclude- I believe that you will conclude that protecting and not converting our agricultural land is firmly established in the planning documents. There has been no directive from the community to change this course. The need for housing does not by any means equal a green light to convert agricultural land any more than we would entertain converting our productive forest land. Please do not rezone the prime agricultural parcel on Seventeenth and Q. Conversion is against all policies and against all past and future efforts to protect our prime resource lands for their highest and best use. And there you go, you heard it straight from the landowner himself. Through and through, ag land speculation, and it should not be rewarded. In Humboldt County, the conversion of agricultural land to non-agricultural uses has been occurring at an alarming rate. Approximately three thousand to five thousand acres of agricultural land has been converted to non-agricultural use each year since nineteen sixty-four. Over one hundred thousand acres of farmland in Humboldt County has been converted due to subdivision over the last few decades. Productive farmland once converted is often replaced with poorer farmland needing more energy and resources, resulting in increased impacts to the environment and decreased productivity. Recognizing that cities like Arcata are the number one threat to surrounding agricultural lands, we must revisit our sphere of influence discussion. Having these prime agricultural lands in our sphere while simultaneously removing the language that prevents conversion in policy LU dash one E is a recipe for disaster. It is like baking a cake but leaving out the baking powder. Please set a time to bring this issue back as it has not yet been discussed and decided on by your commission, and it is critically important in furthering our green belt and open space goals and protecting the important resources to our west and north that are close to the city and not included in the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Craig. Craig, can you unmute? Okay, we're gonna come back to you. Go ahead, Josephina.
Hi, everyone. I'm Josephina Barantes, and I am a resident of Arcata and a graduate student at Cal Poly Humboldt. And I support all the new housing development projects and rezoning of agricultural parcels and low-density residential parcels to high-density residential zones. CPH has already admitted about seventeen thousand students for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. On-campus housing isn't going to be able to house all these students. If there isn't sufficient housing off-campus housing, regardless of what some residents may selfishly want, these students will seek off-campus housing. Students already have an insanely difficult time finding housing in Humboldt, even without this huge influx in enrollment. Even if growth isn't what some residents want, it has to happen. We have needed more high-density housing even before we became Cal Poly Humboldt. I will be working in Arcata post-graduation and would love to continue living here so that I can continue walking and biking to work. But as I am looking for housing that is available, I am forced to look for housing as far as cutting. It disappoints me to think that I would not be able to find housing in the town that I work in, given that I would be even more established upon graduation. However, with the massive influx in incoming students, it is more likely for residents that this would happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Craig. Okay, Craig, we're gonna move on to the next, and we'll give you one more chance after that. Go ahead, Lee.
Hi, I just have a a quick add-on to what everybody else is saying. I am opposed to the high density zone zoning that you're planning for ag and other residential areas. And I think people in in should be informed at their homes by mail of what's going on. Because if you had people informed, believe me, you'd see a lot more people out attending these meetings than you're seeing now. I'd also like to see a discussion of putting a cap on the enrollment at Cal Poly. I think it's a, there's a limited amount of space in this in this town, and and I think that's gonna have a huge impact on it. And people move to this area simply because there's no traffic, we have fresh air. It's beautiful. If you take all that away, why would people want to move here anyway? So, and lastly, I think that there has been a lot of secrecy, and I think I think I I feel like we're not really being heard, that we make our comments and nothing changes. So I understand you have a very difficult job, and I appreciate what you do. And I just think that you need to listen to the citizens who you represent. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, Lee, one more time. Uh, Craig, I'm sorry, Craig. Thank you. Okay, they they must be having some technical issues. Okay, were you hoping to comment on this issue? Step on up.
My name is Sean Todd. I'm a local farmer. I work at Deep Seeded Farm, actually, which, yeah, works through Cityland and all that, great ag land. I'm here to speak on behalf of my neighborhood that lives right adjacent to the Q and Seventeenth neighborhood. I could say that a majority of my neighbors don't want it to happen, but will not show up here because they feel like they will be unheard. So that's just a consideration to take in mind. I love the idea on the cap on Cal Poly Humboldt because, you know, they could pack their bags and get the hell out of here before we change ag land to residential land for all I care. You know, they're scamming you anyways. Like, I came here for HSU. I feel like that university scammed me up here and tricked me for what they, you know, whatever bit of money they they got out of me. For a pretty shit education, in my opinion, too. Pardon my French. But, uh, yeah, I'm just here to speak on behalf of the ag land, too. It's really important. It's what makes Arcata Arcata. How can you grow a city when you can't even take care of the current people that are here? I totally understand the housing issue that Josephina's got going on. Like, I've been there, done that. Yeah, that's the university's fault. Like, it's not the city. You know, there should be a cap on that kind of stuff because they're just making money out of all of it, and who knows where all that money's going? You know, really, to be honest. So something to think about there. But, uh, yeah, keep ag land, ag land. That field should have went to Cypress Grove a long time ago.
Thanks for your comments. That's all the comments we have online. Okay. Great. Well, I appreciate everybody who came here to share their thoughts or dialed in or zoomed in or called in. We appreciate your participation and your input. We will now move to item three, business items. We have two business items today, and first up is we are going to receive a report on crime prevention through environmental design. Can we begin with staff report? Yes, we're passing the controls over here. I'll just introduce Danny. Danny's been working with the city, doing his capstone project with Cal Poly for a number of months now, working with the Arcata Police Department and the Community Development Department to review some crime prevention through environmental design. We might call that SEPTED is the acronym that it's is used for that. So I'd like to turn it over to Danny, and he'll be happy to take any questions that you may have after the presentation.
Thank you for the warm welcome, David. For those of you that haven't met me yet, my name is Danny. I'm David's intern. This is my final semester at Cal Poly Humboldt. I'm a criminology major, and I've been lucky enough to intern with the city of Arcata this semester. Before I get started, I would like to make a disclaimer. This presentation is being conducted as a learning tool by an undergraduate student of Cal Poly Humboldt. The suggestions within this presentation are presented in an unofficial capacity by an unpaid intern for the city of Arcata. Any suggestions presented are designed to follow SEPTED or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design guidelines. The suggestions within this presentation are based on guidelines set by the National Institute of Crime Prevention Training. This presentation is not intended to imply that existing security measures or proposed security measures within the gateway are in any matter good or bad for the site. And with that being said, I would like to get started. So what is SEPTED? SEPTED is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and it follows four basic design principles that cities like to implement within their code. Number one, natural surveillance. See and be seen is the overall goal of this step. A person is less likely to commit a crime if they believe somebody will see it. This deals with lighting, landscape, which both play a role. The second step, natural access control. Utilizing walkways, fences, lighting, signage, and landscape to clearly guide people and vehicles to and from entrances is the goal. It's not necessarily to keep people out of certain areas, but rather to direct the flow of people and traffic. Territorial reinforcement. Creating a sphere, creating a sphere of influence over an area. This is more than a high-block wall topped with barbed wire. This utilizes physical designs such as pavement treatments, landscaping, and signage that enables users of an area to develop a sense of proprietorship over it. Public areas are distinguishable from private ones. Potential trespassers perceive control and are discouraged. And lastly, maintenance. Maintenance is pretty self-explanatory. There is definitely maintenance within this city. I work for the Natural Resources Group with Darius, and we deal with this, but maintenance deals with things like landscape. First, I would like, or now I would like to make a SEPTED statement recommendation for the city of Arcata. Certain crime and other negative activity in and around buildings can be prevented or minimized by incorporating a set of design standards. SEPTED design standards focus on reducing reducing social motifs for crime across building sites. SEPTED aims to build community by bridging together the work of engineers, community development, Arcata Police Department, and community members to promote secure environments. SEPTED focuses on four major themes, which are, number one, natural access control, number two, natural surveillance, number three, territorial reinforcement, and number four, maintenance. SEPTED design practices can cover everything from traffic easement through speed humps to shielded lighting that minimizes glare. Examples include a combination of onsite features such as alarm systems, secured entryways, and visible access, crime prevention measures such as secured secured lighting, street numbers, and visibility for police surveillance. These should be incorporated into and around new and renovated buildings, including the gateway plan. Gated communities hinder police and fire suppression access and shall be prohibited, consistent with the community design element policy. Sounds good. Okay, I would like to talk specifically about bicycle signage. Bicycle signage, whenever a trail connects into a bike path and crosses the road via a crosswalk, proper signage needs to alert drivers of the upcoming pedestrians and cyclists. Additionally, we need to address signage on class four bike lanes that are separated from roadways as bicyclists are a form of transport that need to follow signs as well. And we need to let motorists know about the presence of pedestrians and cyclists. One specific example from the gateway plan deals with figure ten K from the October twenty twenty-two revised gateway plan. Figure ten K illustrates a proposed segment of roadway. I believe this is Barelli Road that connects with Samoa Boulevard, which will expand Fifth Street farther westward. This nearly ninety-degree corner creates a challenge for drivers, forcing them to slow down. But also, we need to have signage on this corner to let the drivers know that there will be a crosswalk there where bicyclists and pedestrians will be crossing. Next, I would like to talk about lighting. Some of the street-level lighting on Arcata's roads has been shielded. Much of Arcata's downtown lighting fixtures are not shielded and not very efficient. Installing the same exact features that we currently have on the Arcata Plaza to match the street-level lighting in the downtown area in the new gateway plan is not efficient. I'm specifically talking about the lighting that we see at the plaza. You can kind of see in the left picture. It's not shielded, so a lot of light is going straight into the atmosphere. It's also not LED, and I propose that we look at lighting solutions from Dark Sky Association. They have a list of very comprehensive solutions to this pedestrian-scale lighting issue that we're having. The International Dark Sky Association has compiled a list of hundreds of dark sky-friendly post-stop lighting fixtures to match the aesthetic of downtown. These LED lights will not only reduce light pollution emitted above the horizontal plane of the light, but will have less maintenance as the bulbs don't need to be replaced as often. When LED lighting is not possible, Dark Sky Society recommends going for high-pressure sodium HPS bulbs instead of metal halide. Okay, continuing on with the lighting. Any new street-level lighting must have proper shielding and LEDs, as I've previously mentioned, for maximum power efficiency. And I kindly ask the engineers to consider LED lighting in all future gateway lighting fixtures. While there is no direct link between lighting installations and crime, at least according to the National Institute of Justice, it's important to take into account glare and environmental concerns. Next, I would like to talk about crosswalks. A member of the community has complained about not feeling safe in crosswalks and being almost hit by cars, which is entirely realistic. And there are certain things that other cities implement to minimize this. Crosswalks in the new gateway plan should be elevated whenever possible. Elevated crosswalks force drivers to slow down and pay attention, and this acts as a measure of traffic calming in addition to serving pedestrians. Pictured here is a speed table. I believe we have some around Arcata, but I think within the gateway plan, it's a good idea to have as many speed tables as possible in exchange for flat crosswalks. The reason elevated crosswalks wa- work is because they also act as a speed hump, forcing the drivers to slow down, and they're more easily visible. Additionally, proper signage needs to exist, alerting drivers of crosswalks. A speed table design promotes more safety than a regular drawn crosswalk. Continuing on with this, in addition to an elevated surface, it would be great if Arcata's crosswalk can be, could be made into a different color than the rest of the road. On the left here, we have a crosswalk that is made of red brick. I know it's expensive to install bricks for crosswalks. However, it's not that expensive to paint crosswalks red or green or a different color. Having a different color for a crosswalk alerts the driver and makes pedestrians safer. Yeah, incorporating different textures could be great, such as brick. And then there's also certainly a possibility for community engagement here. For example, during Pride Month, there could be a public, I guess, redrawing of a crosswalk into the pride flag. That's just an idea. This is definitely a possibility for a community project, turning crosswalks into art. Moving on, I would like to now address the potential bike path conflict that we have within the gateway plan. While it's important to keep class four bike lanes protected from motor traffic as much as possible, there's also the question of addressing left turns on right-handed bike paths. The bike lanes must open The bike lanes must open up for bicyclists to have the option to merge with the rest of traffic or via a painted bike canal to be able to turn left. So over here in the Gateway Plan, uh, this is Figure 10F, I believe. We are seeing a bike lane that has to go right, uh, going southbound, uh, before bicycles can enter the road to go left. And that's very inefficient. I can tell you right now that if it's possible, if there's nothing more than a curb separating the road from the bike path, then bicyclists are just going to go over the curb and turn left going southbound. So the left side of this image portrays a potential solution to left turns from protected bike lanes. As you can see, this, uh, bike path that's on the right side opens up with the rest of traffic. Uh, you can also see there is green color to indicate drivers that there is going to be bicyclists on the road entering potentially, and allows bicyclists to turn left. This, in my opinion, is better than the proposed, um, I guess, right turn that bicyclists will be forced to do if the Class 4 bike lane did not have a separation. Okay, I would like to continue on with bike lane design. So on buffered bike lanes where Class 4 bike lane is not possible, uh, there hasn't been indication within the Gateway Plan to install plastic pillars. And the reason I think plastic pillars are such a great idea for buffered bike lanes is because they're a low-cost solution that has a high impact on bicyclists' safety. Plastic pillars must be installed in buffered bike lanes where protected bike lane is not going to happen. Notice the unique feature of these burly-looking, heavy-duty pillars uh, that we see in the rightmost image, uh, that prevent drivers from cutting corners. Uh, though these pillars are still made out of plastic, uh, they create a sense of territorial reinforcement for the cyclists. A speed hump is another option for corners where the turn is too tight for a pillar. So you can see in the rightmost image there and also in the bottom-left image. These are made out of plastic, but they look like they're made out of cement. Um, acts as a great way of preventing cars from, uh, cutting corners and potentially endangering cyclists. Also, a much lower-cost solution than installing a Class 4 bike lane when that is not possible. Uh, in corners that are too tight, uh, if it's not possible to install a plastic pillar, it's kind of hard to see. But in the rightmost image, there's a tiny little speed hump, uh, on the right turn that would force motorists to slow down a little bit before turning right. Uh, again, this is when installing a plastic pillar is not possible to, to, uh, a tight corner. Okay, I would like to continue on with bike lane design. A safety hazard exists when a protected bike lane becomes unprotected. Proper signage is necessary to alert motorists that they are about to begin sharing the road. Uh, in Figure 10K, though in this figure, there could be enough space to continue the protected bike lane. Apologies. Uh, though in this figure, there could be enough space to continue the protected, protected bike lane for, uh, or at least to make it buffered. Also, bike lanes must remain rightmost, uh, you can see at the bottom of the image. Um, and the additional, additional lane could stay and be used for bikes going straight or left. Uh, basically, in this image, the Class 4 bike lane becomes unprotected, and then there is a point of conflict, um, where the bike lane continues on straight, and then in order for the bikes to make a right turn, um, they would have to cross traffic through the right lane. And so, just looking over 10K, um, before submitting the Gateway Plan would be a great idea because there's a few, uh, bike safety issues concerned there. Uh, okay, additionally, somebody mentioned from the public, uh, speeding, especially around Cal Poly Humboldt, and speeding in straightaways. Um, traffic calming measures must be installed in straightaways. Several speed reduction measures could be placed in more isolated straightaway road sections. New proposed streets, um, such as the streets seen in Figure 10K, could use one of these measures. For example, on the left here, we see speed bars which progressively get closer and closer together, and, uh, as somebody is driving, uh, they get the feeling that they're going faster, even though they're not. The paint is just getting closer and closer together. And this forces or encourages the driver to press on the brakes, um, which is a great low-cost, uh, speed-reducing measure. Um, other images show similar speed-reducing measures. Continuing on with traffic calming, um, and lastly here. It's no secret that roundabouts are safer than four-way stop signs, uh, but they are expensive and require a lot of width to be installed. Uh, we didn't see a lot of, we didn't see roundabouts in the new Gateway, um, but I think it's entirely possible, uh, to install traffic circles. An alternative solution that would work on some of Gateway's intersections is a traffic circle. Traffic circles, similar to the one installed on 13th Street and J Street, um, this promotes drivers to be more aware of their surroundings and reduce the risks of drivers running a stop sign. So these don't require a lot of width. Um, they can be installed on very narrow roads without widthening or without making it wider. And, uh, yeah, I would like to thank everyone for their time, and, uh, thank you, David, for the opportunity to present here.
Thank you very much, uh, Danny, for that presentation. Do any commissioners have any, uh, questions or comments?
Uh, briefly, uh, is there a thought that some of this could be incorporated into design elements for the Gateway, like part of the code requirements?
Yeah, one of the, uh, work products that Danny is working on is sort of a paper that backs up a lot of the, uh, content that he provided tonight, and, uh, we'll work with the Chief of Police, who's very interested in SEPTED, and our city engineers as we start to build out these projects.
That sounds great. That was informative. Thanks again for bringing that to us. Our next agenda item this evening is-
I actually had a quick question, if that's all right.
Oh, that's right, Matt, a voice from the ether.
A voice from the sky.
Go ahead, Matt.
I can't be there in person. Is the only reason to use plastic bollards instead of, you know, a more, uh, concrete material is just cost? Or is there another reason to talk about plastic barriers?
Matt, thank you for the specific question. You were clearly paying attention. Um, plastic pillars make it so that if a motorist crashes into them, uh, they're gonna sustain the least amount of injuries. In fact, it's a plastic pillar. They're not gonna get injured. Their car's gonna be fine. I do not know enough about cement pillars, but we don't see them a lot in bigger cities, um, in buffered bike lanes. Now, protected bike lanes are totally different thing, but with buffered bike lanes, I've only seen plastic being used in other cities. I think it's for driver safety, if anything. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks for your question, Matt, and a reminder that you're actually with us. Our next agenda item this evening is to consider a recommendation to the City Council on the general plan update. Can we begin with a staff report?
Um, yeah, I'll be brief. Um, I was wondering if I could address a couple of the comments that were made, um, before I begin, though.
Yeah, please do. Uh, notifications process, I have written down as something to go over, so add that if you don't already have it.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, uh, some, some... Number one, uh, there was a woman who lived on Iverson who was here before the meeting, and I, uh, let her know that I would convey to the commission that she was also opposed to, um, uh, to building housing in the Agfields behind her house. Um, I think this may have been a little bit of a misconception, um, and this was another thing I wanted to point out. Um, here's Iverson, here's the Bloomfield neighborhood, Q Street, Seventeenth, and Foster West. Here are the two, uh, Ag Residential Parcels that are inside the city limits that, uh, are being considered for, uh, for redesignation. Um, and this area here is outside the city limits. Um, and I think some people were confused that this area was somehow involved in this decision-making process. And I just wanted to let the, the public know that there is no plan for this property. There never has been a plan for this property. The city never has tried to annex this area. Um, when the city did the Creekside Annexation north of Foster here, uh, the local, uh, Agency Formation Commission that is responsible for approving those annexations recommended that we annex all of these lands since there's city boundary, uh, kind of on both sides of it. So they wanted us to take all of this land here and incorporate it into the city. And city staff, uh, backed by the Planning Commission and the council, uh, provided public comment or provided comment to the LAFCO board that we did not wish to do that, that it wasn't consistent with our, uh, our policy. And in part, that was some of the body of policy that, uh, Lisa Brown provided for you tonight, our open space and, uh, resource conservation policies. So these lands are not in play. We are not proposing anything for these lands. We want those to remain in the county, remain agricultural. Uh, that was point one. Um, and then, uh, the second thing, um, there was a claim that our, uh, SALT funds, the Sustainable Agricultural Lands, uh, grant funds are at risk because of this rezone. Um, we've been very clear with, uh, the Department of Conservation that these lands are not being rezoned, uh, using SALT grant funds. They're in no way, shape, or form related to SALT grant is related to, uh, primarily the, uh, the Gateway Area Plan. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to address the question about the sphere of influence. We're not entirely in control of the sphere of influence. We have to work with LAFCO, uh, to amend that sphere of influence boundary. Uh, but I think that the, the comments that were made about reducing the sphere of influence out on the western boundary here is a really good one, and we'd like to, you know, have that as part of our discussion at some point to revise the land use map. Perhaps you can give that guidance tonight, and we'll work with our LAFCO staff to do so. Um, we've made reductions in the sphere of influence with LAFCO in the past, and, and I do think that bringing those, uh, those boundaries to areas where we are intending to annex, um, is, is a good, clear indicator that we don't intend to annex outside of our, our boundaries. Okay, so with those-
Just a few, a few people expressed, um, uh, some level of consternation about not being aware of projects that were happening in their neighborhoods, and I was just looking for a very brief, um, synopsis of the process the city goes through to notify, uh, adjacent landowners when something like this is going on.
Yeah, for, uh, the, uh, notifications that we sent out at this stage, the property owners that are in these proposed annexation, or I'm sorry, these proposed redesignation areas, uh, were notified. We did not notice outside of those areas. When a project comes through, people who are within, uh, who own property within 500 feet or residents within 100 feet of that project site get notified. Um, this again was, uh, you know, this, this, this level of redesignation, um, you know, with the number of parcels and the number of people affected would typically be noticed through just a newspaper ad. Um, so I, you know, I recognize some people may be just down the street. They may be right adjacent to lands that are proposed for redesignation. They did not receive a notice individually.
Got it, but would in the case that there was a project?
Yeah.
Understood. Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's begin by looking at the proposed land use amendments for which we've received, um, significant public comment this evening. I would like to use these and use our framework we have agreed upon where each commissioners find out where, where each, each of you is on these, uh, proposed changes. I'd like to begin with the two Ag Residential Parcels, um, which staff has up on the screen. I've already made my position known, and I'm just wondering, does anyone object to the recommendation that these two parcels remain Ag Residential, and we reject the proposal to change them to high, to residential high density? Um, is anyone proposed, opposed to that?
Can I ask a question first?
Uh, sure, Judith.
Yeah, we've heard from one of the landowners, um, Mr. Nicolini, that, that, um, if the current zoning remains, he will develop, um, housing on those sites. And one of the things that I'm wondering about is, under the current AR zoning, would subdivision be allowed, and to what extent?
Um, the subdivision of an AR parcel would need to meet the, uh, parcel size, minimum parcel size requirements, which is two and a half acres. Um, so you'd have to have each subsequent parcel end up being two and a half acres. Um, I don't, uh, believe that parcel is larger than two and a half acres, and so subdivision of that particular parcel wouldn't be, um, wouldn't be possible. Um, the site does, however, allow for, um, for residential as principally permitted use, and so the state... Yeah, sorry, they're revving up out there. Uh, the parcel does have residential as a principally permitted use, and so, uh, the State Accessory Dwelling Unit Law, um, I believe, would allow for the development of four houses on that, on that property.
And, and it would not be subject to the, um... I'm, I'm mixing my SBs now, the SB9, um, single subdivision because of the-
Uh, no, I don't think, I don't think SB9 would apply here, as a matter of fact. Um, there were many comments about SB9 tonight, uh, which had, uh, slivers of, uh, accurate information in them, but not a lot of complete, um, complete accuracy. Uh, so this, this could not be, uh, subject to SB9.
Peter? Peter, did you have a, a comment or a question?
Well, mine's just a quick follow-up.
Oh, okay.
You said four houses. Does that include the ADUs or, so for total?
For total.
Units?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, um, sorry to just jump in, but I, I will say I was opposed to, uh, Chair's motion. I, I was in favor of the subzoning.
Thanks for that, Matt. Peter?
Yeah, I agree with Matt. I, there are many reasons. One is, uh, we have people in Arcata who are sleeping on the street and are living in tents in the most prosperous nation in the world. It's a crime. And, um, as one of our speakers said, "Safe and secure housing is a human right." We need more housing, and by rezoning this place, th- th- these two parcels, which are within other housing parcels, if you look at the map, it will only, more how, more opportunity to build housing will only, um, start to meet the crisis we're in. I'd like to also comment about, uh, some of the, some of the speakers commented pretty negatively on Cal Poly Humboldt and its, um, its increase in student enrollment. Frankly, I think it's a wonderful change. I think that Cal Poly Humboldt will be educating the kind of leaders that we need to confront the crises that we will see in this century. And, uh, I think we're fortunate to have it here and to have those students living here. They need housing, and we just need more housing. And this will enable more housing. And yes, it's agricultural land. It's not a lot of agricultural land. And I, I think that the need for housing overcomes the, the, uh, the desire to keep this as agricultural land.
Got it, thank you for that. Joel, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, express my opinion. I, I do agree with you, Peter, that I think housing is our number-one challenge. On the, other hand, you know, I'm, I'm really torn with losing Ag land, any Ag land and expanding, you know, the territory of, of, of pavement, even though it produces housing. You know, I, I, I'm currently, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, but I'm kind of on the fence. I mean, uh, I don't disagree with you. I'm not sure this is the right place to put the additional housing.
Go ahead, Judith.
Um, on the rezoning, um, figure, it's marked in our pack, it's five. It should have been Figure four, I think. Is that correct? There are two parcels involved. One would be zoned industrial limited to residential high- industrial limited to residential high. The one to the south, which is, I think, the one we're talking about, is agriculture residential proposed to rezone to residential high. I think that rezoning the industrial land would probably be okay. But we've had a very longstanding policy in Arcata to retain our green belt on the western boundary of our developed area. And we've also had a longstanding policy that along that boundary, there should be a graduated increase in development, including height and bulk of buildings, not an abrupt one. Rezoning this particular site to residential high density, which could yield residential densities of up to 90 units per acre with the density bonus rules, if our rationale is that this is actually infill, which it actually isn't, in my view, would break both of those longstanding policies and firmly held planning approaches of the city, which have really kind of governed how we've addressed land use on that far side of Alliance. We've, we've pushed that policy a few times. We began to push it with the approval of the Danco Project, which has now been scrapped since Cal Poly bought the 16 acres of land involved. But I think that the points that some of our commenters made about that Western Green Belt and the Western Green Belt policies, which this commission adopted and the city council adopted only a few years ago, I think 2018, pretty clearly stated that this land should remain zoned for agriculture. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't build houses on it. It does mean that you can't build 90 units. And it does mean that you can't subdivide it into quarter acre plots.
Thank you, Judith. Christian?
Yeah, it's one of those situations where you're definitely torn in regards of, you know, the need for housing in Arcata. However, it goes against the ethos of our community where, which we believe in preservation of timberlands and agricultural lands. So it's, you know, definitely splits hairs in regards of, you know, what we believe in as a community and what I believe in as well. I'm in favor of, you know, rezoning the industrial limited for sure, because it's already industrial limited to residential high density. But I think, I think there's enough folks in our community, and I feel personally as well, you know, there's only so much limited agricultural land within our, within the city limits. You know, we're surrounded by agricultural lands on the west side. And as we go down towards the bay. But I feel that, you know, that this land should be preserved for its intent.
Thank you, Christian. Dan, where do you land on this? And also keeping our discussions really on these ag residential parcels. Go ahead.
I'm on the just say no to rezoning ag lands. I think we've had excellent comments in the public, the letters in particular, the maps, the general plan consistency. And it, for all the rezoning that we're doing and infill, this doesn't seem important enough to me to feel the need to rezone this one as well, or these two. I also think that there was a comment a couple of weeks ago on this topic about those parcels being kind of a gateway towards the bottoms. And I'm, I know we all love our ag land to the west. And access to it is a big deal. And preserving just that corridor that does happen to join the Shea Park, which is where our coastal trail passes through, feels like a natural place to try to keep it open and preserved. And if somebody ever does want, I mean, it'd be lovely to imagine some kind of future little truck farm there or something. I didn't, you know, who knows what will happen in the future. But that kind of parcel that has a lot of visibility is, it would be just a great little spot for any kind of CSA or anything like that, I would think. One of my challenges with some of the CSAs is the driving that it takes to get your box of vegetables every week. And so the more they're in town and accessible near a bike lane or something feels like it's part of this long-term goal of ours.
Thank you. Peter?
Can I ask a question? It's currently zoned agricultural residential. Is that right? So why, how are we preserving agricultural land if it could be subdivided into little ranchettes for rich people?
It can't be, it cannot be subdivided.
Well, it could have.
The comment, the comment about...
Mr. Nicolini made.
The comment about eight units, I believe, was in reference to two parcels. Each parcel can have four units. So there could be a total of eight units on that block of five acres. But it cannot be subdivided. That would be two acres with eight parcels.
Right. I feel aligned with you, Peter, regarding the concern about, and the really desperate need to address the housing situation in Arcata. I feel 100% aligned with you there. And I also agree with you about your, your comments regarding Cal Poly and that potential influence in the future. I think for me, it just, if, when I'm weighing this out, I'm, I am looking at really a lot of public comment and letters regarding this issue. And I'm aligned with Judith's observation and reminders about commitments that were made to the ag land on the western part of the city. And ultimately, I think it's such a small amount of property, I don't see it having the same kind of impact on the housing situation that we're able to get by focusing this infill in areas like the Gateway, which are sort of identified specifically because they're industrial areas that are not ag lands. And so for these reasons, that's where I'm landing on maintaining that remain ag residential and reject the proposal to change them to high density. If I'm counting correctly, I'm counting currently for allowing them to stay ag residential. Do you want to make a decisive vote here, one way or the other, Joel?
Well, at least on the agricultural, the AR parcel, I'm in agreement with you.
Okay. So given that, staff, can you reflect this poll in our recommendation to the city council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Judith.
The particular exhibit in question, there is that industrial limited that staff has proposed to change to residential high. And I'm, I'm thinking that in light of the fact that the AR plot to the south would not allow for residential high density, I'm thinking that it would be unwise and premature to rezone the lot to the north for high density as well, for this, for similar reasons. It's not a pristine site. There was a mill there before. It's at a tricky part of the road. And it would then become that, that boundary into our green area on the west. And so I'd like to take that rezoning of the industrial limited to residential high off the table for the time being as well.
Okay.
Since that then is our western boundary. And we do have a very, very clear policy about a gradual switch from our undeveloped or less developed land to gradual increases in height and bulk. And that would not fit there.
Got it. Thank you. You jumped right into the next piece I wanted to talk about, which was specifically that land use designation. The owner of the parcel with land use designation industrial limited adjacent to those AR parcels, has written a letter requesting that the IL parcels not be redesignated. And I'm wondering if anyone is opposed to the redesignation on the northern parcels in this block from industrial limited to residential high. I'm hearing that Judith is opposed to that. Is anyone else opposed to that reclassification? Redesignation, I guess I should say.
Yeah, and if I could draw your attention to the screen, excuse me. Again, these, this one parcel, split by the creek, and then this parcel here are the two AR parcels, ag residential. And then these parcels above this line are zoned industrial limited. This one functions more as like a residential low density or residential very low density zoning district. There's a single family home on it. But these parcels have industrial uses on them. And so looking at the zoning map, oops, sorry, you can see that jog in the property boundaries here. Everything south of this line is ag residential. Everything north of that line is industrial limited. And so this industrial limited, these parcels up here are the ones that you're considering at this point.
Thank you for that. So again, Judith has expressed opposition to this redesignation. Is anyone else opposed to the redesignation of these industrial parcels? Okay, seeing none, then let's move on to the next question, which is the...
Excuse me, can you tell, can you tell us what the recommendation here is then? I'm not sure that seeing none to...
I'm taking a negative vote of, you had expressed a negative vote. None of the other commissioners expressed a negative vote. So I'm taking that as broad support from the planning commission to make a redesignation of those industrial limited parcels and asking staff to reflect this decision in our recommendation to the council.
Can I point out that staff did point out to us that the owner themselves is opposed to this rezoning?
I was under the understanding that is the owner of that residential parcel also own the industrial limited stuff? Or is it...
Sorry, the, the point I was trying to make is that this parcel is zoned industrial residential. This parcel owner wrote in opposition to the rezone of her individual parcel. And the parcel, even though it's zoned industrial, it actually has single family uses developed on it. So it functions more like a residential low density. So they asked not to be rezoned. If you are not interested in rezoning this to industrial, or to residential high density, I would propose that it be rezoned to something else than industrial. It's a little bit odd. It seems a little bit like spot zoning to call it something other than what it's immediately adjacent to. But that's, that's your recommendation.
Yeah, I think we should pursue this. So your, the chair's suggestion is that there seems to be a majority that's open to the idea of rezoning the industrial limited section to the north. However, this single residential lot, I think we ought to handle this real quick right now. I mean, I think we would all agree that is misidentify, or mislabeled as industrial limited, and that we ought to do something with it right now.
What, what else could it be zoned as that would allow it to either, that would address this basic conundrum?
So if you wanted to recognize it in its current status, I would probably, I would probably redesignate it residential low density. It's a little bit odd to have it, you know, just a single residential low density parcel. It's kind of like spot zoning. We typically try not to do that. We try and rezone based on, you know, future vision for, you know, an area as opposed to what happens to be there right now. When you rezone based on what happens to be there right now, then you, you do end up with kind of a hodgepodge. And that's part of what we've inherited. That's part of what makes this, this work so difficult.
Can I just say that I'm opposed to spot zoning that one piece? And that we also ignored the wishes of the landowner for the ag land that we just didn't rezone. So, I mean, I don't think that that should be decisive.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that comment.
I agree with Matt. We, yes, we just ignored one landowner. We can ignore the second.
Right. I'm in alignment with Matt and Peter on that. Have you changed your mind on this at all?
No, I haven't changed my mind on any of that, except that it just seems really odd that a residential parcel is zoned industrial limited. But I can let it go. I don't care.
Christian or Joel?
Nothing's going to change to that parcel anyway.
Well, and just to clarify really quick, for Commissioner Tegney, the proposal is to change it from an industrial to a residential use type through this. It will just be residential high, not as it currently is functioning as a residential low density site. Just make sure that was clear.
Thanks, Dilo.
Thank you. So that parcel for sure then would get lumped in with the residential high? Yeah, I, I yield, I'm a, I'm a three on...
Okay. Not seeing sufficient opposition to change that. So can you please reflect this decision to allow that redesignation in our recommendation to the council? I'm just going to say that we have a meeting time as it's our triple header this week. We're going to wrap by 7:30. We have a couple minutes left. We do have something I want, I do want to discuss briefly our, our overall sort of process here and a small tweak to it. So I'm just flagging that we only have a few minutes left. Go ahead, Judith.
We, we were led to believe that this evening we would be talking about these rezoning proposals. We've had members of the public expecting that that's what we're going to talk about. Some of us did prepare to talk about that and get through those items. So if we're not going to continue talking about that, can we reschedule exactly when we will complete that discussion? And I hope it's at our very next meeting.
I think rescheduling with a specific date sounds like a reasonable proposal. But before we get to that, do we want to, let's, let's move on to the Craftsman's Mall infill opportunity zone. And perhaps, staff, can we get a visual of that so we can align ourselves and reorient? Maybe you have a few words about that piece?
Judith, can you pull the shade over there? We're getting a weird glare off of something. That didn't do it. Okay. Well, yeah, thanks, Peter. That's okay. Okay. So I'm just going to move this over a little bit. So just orienting, here's Highway 101. Here's the St. Louis Road Overpass winding out this way to West End Road. The infill opportunity zone identified as the Craftsman Mall, infill opportunity zone does include the area that Cal Poly has purchased and is planning on developing its student housing on. Many of the parcels to the north of this here are residential medium currently. And then the parcels to the south, all of this here, is, I believe, if I'm interpreting public comment correctly, the area that they would like you to detach from the proposal to have this area rezoned. For the purposes of your discussion, I guess one thing I would offer as a potential bridge between these two things is to have two different zoning designations of RH and RM. I don't know if that satisfies the, the speakers who have spoken out against this, but you know, that's one, one potential thing to consider. Doesn't have to be a monolithic zoning district. And then of course, the other, the other is to completely detach this lower portion, which is currently all residential low density housing, from the rezone entirely and just leave that as residential low. Those are the two most obvious. I'm sure there's like 20 other options.
Right. Go ahead, Dan.
I have a question. Is JAY Street narrower than the standard 50-foot street in Arcata? I have a question. Is JAY Street narrower than the standard 50-foot street in Arcata?
I, I don't know definitively. I can tell you that all of the streets in that Sunset and JAY neighborhood, that entire area, all of the streets are very narrow. I believe one of the speakers had said before, it's hard to get two cars to pass abreast one another. That's true of all of those streets. We all do have to pull over from one another.
Okay, may I just continue then?
Please. Yeah, please.
In interest of time. I am definitely interested in decoupling the southern portion of the Craftsman's Mall rezone, basically at the Cal Poly project. And then, having a discussion about whether or not we should go residential medium or leave it exactly the way it is. But I definitely feel like it should be decoupled. I don't see any continuity or reason to include it.
And in a decoupling concept, would you be comfortable with residential medium versus the residential high as a reduced impact on that neighborhood?
I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to flesh out a discussion about what residential medium would mean. I, you know, that would be a big topic, but it's a separate topic.
Well, I think it's important, if we're gonna decouple, to discuss that. Maybe I'll take a straw poll. Is, is there any other support for the idea of decoupling that southern portion? Judith is a yes. Joel, go ahead.
I'm in favor of the decoupling.
Thank you, Peter.
I am too. I, um, one of the speakers talked about the possibility of a very large development. If it were residential medium, would that be possible?
Would it be possible to have the very large development? There, there's a property that is off Todd Street, kind of right around here, that is, I'm sorry, it's, it's more like around here, at the very lower end. That's basically a vacant parcel at this point. And so, changing the zoning from, or the land use designation, and ultimately, the zoning from residential low to residential medium would certainly allow for a larger-scale project.
Can you, can you give us a, maybe a quick understanding of what the reduced impacts would be on the neighborhood from residential high to residential medium?
If you give me a moment, I'll look up the proposed density ranges. But I believe residential high was a maximum of 50, and residential medium, I think, was in the 30s.
Okay. Christian?
Per acre?
Correct, per acre, yes.
Does number of stories come in at all?
Number of stories does change between those zoning districts typically in order to achieve the higher density. It's usually a higher maximum story level or maximum height.
Christian, where are you landing on this? You comfortable with decoupling if we drop it from residential high to residential medium?
Yeah, I'm keen.
Okay. Sounds like there's broad support for decoupling that lower portion. And change, is everyone comfortable with a, with a residential medium designation? Go ahead, Judith.
That southern end that's not the large property, what is it currently zoned? The, those are single-family houses for the most part?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Other than that large Strombeck property, I believe, north of the tennis courts, what are the, what are the rest of those parcels currently zoned?
They're all zoned residential low currently.
Including the large parcel?
Including the large parcel. And the access for that parcel, should it be developed with apartments, would be from where? Could you point with your arrow?
Yeah, so here's, here's the vacant parcel right immediately adjacent to Larson Park. And here's Todd Court. And so, most likely, they would either come in and off of Todd Court, or there's the possibility for a one-way circulation through the property off of Todd and then back on to Grant. And if this area was rezoned to, you know, higher density, you know, due to the, the, you know, nature of the streets out here, there might, might need to be some work done to improve circulation and, and, you know, that sort of thing. You know, the possibility for, for one-way streets, you know, to, to have the traffic more comfortably pass through that area. You know, it's just, it's, at this point, it's, you know, because it's just a proposal to rezone before we, you know, put the effort into suggesting a recommended recirculation. I'm just suggesting that that may be the case, given the, the size of the roads.
I'd like to propose then that if we're considering decoupling that area, that we retain the current zoning. And if the owner of that one property decides that he wants to develop it, he can then apply to rezone that property in the future. But that we not build that into our general plan right now and then build it into our general plan-related zoning. So, decouple that area and retain its current zoning on the south part for the time being?
Well, if I'm taking the temperature of the commission correctly, I, I think we have broad support currently for decoupling that southern section and having it be zoned residential medium. Is there anyone else besides Judith that would like to make a further change? Go ahead, Dan.
I, I will second Judith's goals. I think that there's time in the future to revisit this and that the applicant can further that decision. There really, to me, I've lived on JAY Street, and there really is some access issues in there. And I, I feel for the residents that live in there when they talk about it. And if you go back in there, it's tough. The Cal Poly project, I am assuming, will further this trail development between 101 and this whole residential neighborhood. And I like to think that there'll be massive use of that trail. That it's easier to go to Cal Poly from that housing project by taking the trail than to try to drive and park. You'll probably park further away than just walking. And if that flushes out and really is working, and it seems like this project or this parcel wants to get developed, either high-density or medium-density because of the trail, because we see that kids aren't bringing cars, they really are using the trail, that's a game changer. But we haven't seen it yet. We don't know. I don't know when the trail's gonna get built. I assume that, I mean, it was condition of approval on the last applicant. I don't know what, where Cal Poly's at on that or what's gonna happen.
Okay, thanks for that, Dan. Dan is aligned with Judith. Go ahead, Peter.
I'm in favor of residential medium. I, I think if you, if it's residential low, that's a barrier to someone. They have to do a zone change before they can proceed with their project. And that's a barrier, and we need housing. So, I think residential medium is a good compromise.
Matt, I'm gonna assume, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of residential medium. I like what Dan was talking about with the path there. And I think that allowing more people to live there, and it takes time to build these buildings, will, you know, work well with the path. I also, I don't know, I just, I don't think it ruins a neighborhood to have some apartment buildings put in. And I just wanna say that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Joel?
I have a question of Dave, of David. If, if this were rezoned RM, would some of these smaller lots be able to accommodate, you know, to max out the, the density that RM would allow them over RL?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So, this property right here is typical for the neighborhood. It's .15 acres. Dilo looked up the residential medium proposal, which is 25 units per acre. So, that would allow for 3.75. We round up, that's four units. The parcel can currently build four units using state ADU law. So, rezoning to residential medium density doesn't do anything to, to the, the base zoning district. Now, you have to have the caveat that, you know, if you wanna count accessory dwelling units that don't count towards your, your, your base density. If it was RM, you'd be able to build those four units. But then, you'd also be able to build at least one other and potentially two other accessory dwelling units. So, it's a difference of, you know, potentially one to two units on, on the average parcel. I think what's, what's more likely to happen is that you've got a couple of sites that are, you know, vacant now. There's one right across the street here. There's one here. And then, there are a few, you know, most of the housing stock in this area is older but well-maintained. There are a few houses in this area that are older and not very well-maintained. And so, you know, those would probably be the next in line to, you know, be either tear-down, rebuild, and they'd probably take advantage of the, the added density. This, this, the proposal here, again, this, this kind of gets back to the same, same analysis in some ways that you had on the last AR parcel. This is not the highest opportunity area that we have in the city of Arcata. In part, what was driving this, when we adopted it in the housing element, was the Craftsman's Mall project. And then, there are a couple of parcels to the north here that have some good opportunity for residential development that are never gonna get developed at their current zoning densities, but may get developed if, if they can build enough housing on them. And so, you know, I think the, you know, the proposal to, you know, either, either solution that you recommend of either keeping it RL or moving it to RM, RM is definitely gonna stimulate more, more development.
Okay, so, Dan and Judith are opposed. Christian, you're still in favor of residential medium with decoupling, Matt? So, I think where the majority is supporting decoupling and changing that southern portion to residential medium.
Okay.
And...
Can I, can I point out something right now? Which is, in, in incorporating that recommendation into the general plan update, that does not rezone these properties. That's a separate process. And it will have separate public input and a separate set of decisions by the Planning Commission and by the City Council. So, this recommendation is not the end of opportunities for the public to weigh in.
Thank you for that, Judith. And then, we are at 7:30. I have no regrets about taking the first hour largely to do public comment. But one of the implications of that is that we are at the end of our meeting time this evening. I appreciate everyone being willing to do basically a triple header in five days. We've done a lot of work, and I wanna keep to my commitment to wrap this up. Before we close, though, one quick thing. I wanted to seek input from the commission as a whole on changing a little bit our meeting framework agreement by which we're moving through our review work. At our last meeting, at the end, we got pretty bogged down and found that many of the items in the other matters section were basically formatting and, and style suggestions from a variety of commissioners. I am suggesting, in an effort to prioritize our time with the most impactful work we do, that we, our time is best spent in together focusing on policy. And I'd like to suggest amending our agreement so that editorial comments are not reflected in our discussion. And so, I'd just like to discuss this briefly with the rest of the commission. Specifically, I'm proposing that we agree to forward editorial comments to staff and ask that they not be reflected in our discussion guide so that we can preserve our bandwidth here together for more impactful work focusing on policy. But I would like to hear what all of the rest of you think. Go ahead, Peter. I saw you first.
Yeah, I agree. And I always thought, when I was making a comment like that, it was a comment to you all to just do it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Judith.
When I made my editorial comments, and most of those comments, I, I will admit, were mine. They were, in fact, sent to staff. Staff can include those in the consent items, and then, they will not come up for discussion, and we will not spend time on them. I would strongly recommend that rather than a blanket process change that would basically make it impossible for us to bring up editorial issues that you might classify as editorial, but that I might classify as substantive. So, I think that's a discussion that we can have with staff so that staff can either decide to make those changes or not. Ideally, if they're good suggestions, put them in the consent list that staff is already assembling. Allow us to say, hey, yeah, that sounds good, or to pull it off the consent list. And that way, we do not squelch discussion of genuine, genuinely substantive matters and of editorial matters which are also substantive.
Got it.
So...
Okay, thank you, Judith. There's a proposal on the table to just kind of kick this to staff. Judith is proposing that we put them in the consent calendar instead. Other commissioners have a preferred route here?
You know, like what Peter said, he thought he was just suggesting a little edit to the staff. I think this leaves it up to staff to have to decide when it's a small edit or when it's substantive that we all should be aware of. I really like the idea, though, of if it makes it to our voting body, that it go on the consent calendar. I think that would smooth everything out.
Okay. Joel?
I have no problem with, with what Dan just said.
Okay. Christian, what do you think?
I think there's value capturing the editorial pieces, for instance. Or I, I think we should be able to see it. You know, whether or not we want to deliberate on it or anything like that, you know, that's something, you know, that's a whole nother can of worms. But maybe we suggest that, you know, this is a suggested edit or prefacing, you know, when we put something on paper and we send it to staff so they're familiar, you know, so they're aware of what our intent is. Maybe we preface that piece of information when we send it over. I know, that's what we are doing. But yeah, it seems, but it seems like there's still confusion. So, I don't know how we can, how we can improve this process.
I, I actually really appreciate that recommendation. I think if there's a concern that staff is gonna misinterpret something that is substantive as an editorial comment, if you clearly list them on your comments to staff, these are my policy recommendations. These are my editorial comments. That will help clear things up. And instead of putting those in the consent, what I would recommend is that we just have a placeholder for them on this discussion so everyone can see the recommendations. I cannot guarantee that all of those recommendations are gonna be incorporated. When we clean these very messy track changes documents up, we're gonna be revealed a whole new document that's gonna have all kinds of other fresh new problems. And I don't want anybody to think that because you said on, you know, April 27th that you approved some editorial change, that it's gonna show up in the final document. We just can't have that expectation. We're gonna have to do some, some final editorial comments. There are several recommendations that Commissioner Mayor has made that, you know, about organizational changes and structural changes and the way the documents read and that sort of thing. Those, those are great comments. Those are easy to incorporate. I don't think they necessarily have to be approved. I guess if we put them in a new section, that these are the editorial comments that we're taking into consideration, you know, that'll help daylight them without having to have any discussion. Because if someone does say, oh, well, there is this editorial comment that I wanna pull off of consent, then we're down the rabbit hole on, on those issues and not focusing our energy on the policy. So, I would, I like the idea of, when you send me your comments, you separate out under separate heading, these are my editorial comments. I'll put those in a separate section on the discussion guide and say, these are the editorial comments received. You can acknowledge them, you know, in the meeting. We see there are a bunch of editorial comments. These all look great to us, but you don't have to talk about them or vote on them.
I, I would say that's, I would say that's a good mark because in respects of transparency and so forth for the community. And also, it acknowledges that we sent in this information and it's compiled. I think that's, I think that's appropriate in the which, the way that you just described it.
Okay. Is, is everyone in favor of that, making a differentiation when comments are submitted so that they can be put aside as such? Thank you for that. Matt, are you in agreement with the group here or like to weigh in?
I think consent is fine, and that all works.
Okay, great. So then, let's adopt a change that we will mark editorial versus... Go, go ahead, Dan. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, what Matt just said was put it on consent, and that's not what we're saying. We're just gonna put it in yet a separate category, not on the consent calendar. And if we shoot, right?
I, I misspoke. That, I agree with what you're all saying.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. So, so, the next question is when we can or how to handle rescheduling the work we did not get to that was on our agenda for this evening? Do we want to, do we have a, well, what is our next opportunity?
Yeah, let me just ask while I've got everyone here... Yeah, let me just ask while I've got everyone here. No discussion, just show of hands. Are there other... You know, we heard a lot about the Ag Residential, we heard a lot about this rezone, we heard a lot about this rezone. We heard more generally, you know, comments opposed to or for other, you know, general upzoning or redesignations. Do any planning commissioners feel the need at this point to come back and review other areas within this map? Okay.
Does anyone besides Commissioner Mayor want to bring this back for further review?
Are you saying that every one of the proposed zoning changes and all of the language associated with the zone definitions, some of those zones are being redefined?
No, this is just...
It's just fine?
Just the map. So you've got the... There are several items that are in the bike rack. I think Commissioner Simmons at the last meeting suggested that to have those elevated, change those to specific proposals, but that the specific proposed redesignations that are shown on this map, are there any others that you want to start with on this? Because I do think, as we sort of sorted out last time, you know, these redesignations are the things that people, you know, have been interested in. Are there other areas that you're hearing from people that you want to make sure that you come back to this map? Because I think that really depends on how we set up the next meeting. This meeting was intended to cover the circulation element, which was very important to you at the meeting at which you covered the circulation element. This was important work, and I'm glad that we did it, but I, you know, we didn't get to circulation. And so, at some point, you know, you're either gonna say, look, we're just not getting to those policies before July, or you're making more special meetings, and so part of your feedback here tonight helps me think about how to, you know, structure and notice the next meeting. If you're more interested in the policies and the definitions, that's different than if we're gonna be looking at this map.
The reason that I think it's important to look at every one of those exhibits in the map is that I went through them, and on several of them, I've had questions about what actually would happen in the case of a rezone, which would imply a different development intensity, different types of uses, possibly adjustments to the public rights of way involved. And I'd like to have an opportunity to ask those questions and to clarify what would be involved in those rezones, because I'm not sure that they're all quite as simple and straightforward as putting them on a map implies. And given that we have had this set of exhibits for months, and some of us have prepared to ask those questions, and we have yet to have an opportunity to do so, I think we should schedule that opportunity, take it and do it. We can do it expeditiously, but we should not act irresponsibly and put aside our responsibility to really understand what we're being asked to approve. And I'm not sure that we really understand the implications of every one of those rezones right now.
I understand. I appreciate that perspective, and I hear what you're saying, Judith. I think my concern here is that we not get too far off our existing schedule. It's not that I think that this isn't an important issue, but to prioritize this means that we're then deprioritizing circulation and other things that we specifically created this meeting to address, which we now didn't get to. So it becomes a matter of sort of order and prioritization. So I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission about whether we want to bike rack this issue until we have, as we have in the past already, on a couple occasions, an opportunity to clear up bike rack items and keep circulation on the top of our agenda or push that off and prioritize the rest of this discussion.
And if I could just throw in one more bit of information to help with the discussion. At your next meeting, the 9th of May, the... There's only one general plan element. It's a historic preservation element. And then the gateway-specific concerns or ownership opportunities, gentification, housing affordability, some of this, I think, we've already covered. And so, I would note that you may have additional time on that May 9th. We don't have any public hearings on that date. This will be the only agenda item, so trying to get back to circulation and land use in that order. Historic preservation, circulation, land use.
Is everyone... Does that sound good to the commission broadly?
Can we reverse that order, please, so that we complete the work that we've begun before we move on to something else?
It's certainly up to the commission to do... To choose how the order of the operations go, but that is in conflict with the framework that you've agreed to.
What's the general...
Yeah, I'm with Judith on this one. I think we need to address things that have not been completed before we start on something new.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I probably did not prime the discussion. We haven't had a real opportunity to sit down and talk Commissioner Yodowitz. The commission did adopt a framework in order to meet the objectives set by the council within that July timeframe, and part of that framework, part of that agreement, was to cover the topics that are listed in the timeline on the dates that they're listed, and then anything that you don't get through on that date goes into the bike rack. And there are two opportunities in June that are scheduled for returning to the bike rack items. This particular meeting was scheduled specifically to address bike rack items and specifically to address the circulation element. Land use got reprioritized at our last meeting as a higher priority, but this was a special meeting set aside to address the bike rack issues. Your next meeting is the first opportunity that you'll have to see the historic preservation element. And so, you know, I guess there's nothing magical about the framework. You can amend it at any time, but I would offer that if you want to go against that framework and take up bike rack items before the item that's scheduled on that date, that you make a specific change to the framework so that you're all in agreement on that.
I mean, my preference is we stick with the framework we agreed to and work efficiently to get through stuff. The next meeting has a somewhat light agenda, and I would propose that we do circulation and then get back to this. What is the rest of the...
Yes. I hate to give up on the framework myself. It just seems way too abrupt. I would encourage, if it works, Commissioner Mayor to submit the topics that you'd like, the exhibits exactly and what zoning changes you'd like discussed so that the staff can be prepared to just run through them, and it might happen in a pretty short order, I would think. So that we don't just keep having to say, well, what about this one, and we have long-winded discussions.
Matt, where do you land on this?
I think we should stick with the framework, but what I understand that to mean is, we talk about historic preservation, then we talk about circulation, which we were in the middle of talking about when we scheduled this meeting, and then we come back to talking about the zoning map changes, right? That's sort of the order that these things would go in the framework, but yeah.
That's correct. Correct. So is that what you're saying, Dan? You'd like to stick with that? And Christian?
Correct. Yeah, I'd like to stick with the framework.
Peter? Okay. So let's do that in the proposed order and get back to this on the 9th. We'll now move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members this evening? Any correspondence from staff?
Nope.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for the work.